There was. A moment. Okay, so we've come out of executive session. We um are going to go into the action items on the agenda. The first one is to approve an emergency provisional for a long-term sub. So this long-term sub is going to come on as a full-blown teacher, correct?
She is certified in Alaska, so she's working on her credential. She doesn't currently have the Idaho credential. And she'll probably need to take a few classes.
Okay.
So, but yeah, we're struggling.
Does anybody have any questions, comments, discussion this morning?
I did, but I don't know if there's anybody here that could answer. I was just wondering how long we ran it, where did we run the opening and how many applicants we had? Um, cause I know uh obviously we've had problems in the past trying to hire people.
So this particular position um was open last year in the spring. Um all summer and uh they're just starting a lot of people that have the credential.
Yeah. What position is she going to take? Art. Oh, so she's gonna no longer be a long-term sub, she's just gonna be a full-blown teacher or a post-grad. Okay, okay.
How long has she been long-term?
Um, I, she's new to us, I think, uh, this year. She's, um, maybe she just came from Alaska.
Any further questions? All right, everyone can start. Okay, then the honor to the motion at this time. I move to approve the emergency provision.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to the bus bid. These are the bids for the activity buses that we um.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. This got, we, we already agreed that we were gonna move forward with, but now the, the bids are in.
Yeah, this was for our own transportation, right? That's what these are for.
Yes.
Okay.
Lisa, do we know if we would be getting them with uh coach seats or if we're going with the bench?
That was a Chairman Thompson, that was a, I mean, I put that in as a option.
Okay.
Um, we can, I mean, the low bidder was um was Harlow's.
Right.
Um, and even with the upgraded seats, they were still low.
And those stuff.
Yeah, both companies did meet the specifications. I had the mechanics check and make sure that they had, you know. So that was there and so um, you know, it's gonna be at our option if we wanted to. You know, it, it is an upgrade and costs what that three or four thousand dollars additional. It would probably make it a more comfortable ride over the years. We have it honestly, um, the bench. Um, I mean, if we're gonna go, it would be nicer, but it's not um, it's not essential, I guess, is what you could say.
Right. It's a nice thing.
Right, but I, I'd like, well, yeah, but what I wouldn't wanna see happen is that we have these bench seats. We're working on screaming more than we should in the bus.
Right.
But if you've got the buckets, I don't know if you need kids up on the floor.
Do the, do the bucket seats have seatbelts?
Yes, I think there are seatbelts uh in this for everybody in, in, in this.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, cause they're not, they can't compartmentalize this like they, they can in a traditional yellow school bus, so.
Do even the bench seats have seatbelts?
I believe so.
That would, that would be a kind of a big factor, I guess, for me. Especially on the long trips to Boise or Twin Falls or Idaho Falls, Okeetla.
Right.
Probably save that much on gas in one trip for a school bus.
And there's a seatbelt cutter that's mounted in the driver's area.
Yes.
So that would tell me there are seatbelts. How do, how does this pre, I'm, I'm just trying to recall what we were hoping to get them for or what we had originally talked about them potentially costing? How does this compare to that? I don't remember.
That, I I, I think it's, it's definitely in the ballpark. We're thinking that I, I thought that Post Falls might have found a used one, but they were like fifty, you know, um, you know, for used and so really getting one for seventy branded with no miles.
Mm-hmm.
I, yeah, I mean, just the way trucks and cars are so expensive right now, it, I was actually thinking it might get up to eighty-five or ninety, honestly.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, we didn't have all the features. The, the specs came from the state. We used their sheet cause we've never done before. And then I went to the mechanics and said, okay, guys, here's, here's the sheet. And then Casha, I had a, I contacted one of my business managers who had bought these down in South Idaho. And I said, could you send me, you know, the specs that you had in your bid? So he did. So we saw the blank, what he did, and then what we thought was needed. Maybe as the difference up here with South Idaho and North Idaho. It was pretty similar, but it was good to see somebody else who had
Actually done it, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, Western Mountain, I think, bid on him also, and I think they lost it cause they were too high, actually. Um, when I saw his bid. But, yeah, so that was sort of our process as we were going um through that. And yeah, I, I think, given the increase in prices and stuff, I think he, he did his over twelve, fifteen months ago. So the prices were better on their bid down south, but I think that is just re- relative to what the inflation we were getting hit with recently.
Well, I don't know if it was a typo or not, but on Western Mountain, it showed that delivery in twenty twenty-four, but Harlow's is twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, and you know, and I put, but I didn't put a hard date in there because I just, I know.
Well, I don't think we need to roll on this.
Yeah.
Twenty twenty-three is a little early.
Right, well, I don't, yeah, cause we know they have different manufacturers and different factories, who knows when they would be available.
Yeah, that's all that's written down there. Right. Right.
Like the, is it the, Western States is a gas motor and the other one's diesel? Yeah, that Pegasus had with the six-six.
Yeah.
That's a good motor.
Yeah, it should be.
Is that a gas or?
No, it's a diesel.
Okay.
But it's a light duty diesel.
Yeah, okay.
But I have one, that's why I know. I've actually had two.
Just so we know.
Yeah.
Nothing about those.
I'm just saying, one's, one's a gas and it's, it's more money than the other one, which is weird.
Okay.
Yeah, and so we, and we did, we, we didn't uh define
Gas.
gas or diesel, it's just, yeah, what, what do you have available?
Yeah. Yeah.
Cool.
So was there a recommendation, sorry about that, from uh the bus or the mechanics who ever will be working on these?
Yeah, our mechanics actually won't be working on them.
Okay.
Part of it is that we get, the way they fund transportation is they have to be working on two-front transportation. So we definitely, if, for maintenance and things like that, we'll, we'll farm it out to, you know, what we'll shop.
Okay.
Um, they, um, I mean, they, they were neutral on either one on that, even though I think, uh, as Trustee Quimby said, some of them have a diesel motor and
Yeah.
for some of that stuff for a little bigger rig and going up the passes and stuff, know that it might be a little better. Um, but, you know, you know, generally like, you know, unless we had a really compelling reason with, with bid loss since both were made, they both submitted responsible bids. You know, if there's not really a compelling reason, then, you know, generally we go with the, the lowest cost responsible bid.
Yeah, okay, yeah. All ready then? Thank you.
You're welcome.
If it can be heard, it's just a little.
It does feel like a Monday, doesn't it?
It does.
It's very Monday, Wednesday.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I don't have any further questions.
Okay. Anybody else? No, I do not. Okay. I will entertain a motion on the bus bid.
So I would move that we approve uh bidder number one, Harlow's in the amount of seventy thousand, thirty dollars and sixty-six cents as presented.
I'll second. Having a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. And then the last item is the new job descriptions and salary replacements.
So Cindy Happany has submitted her letter of retirement.
Okay.
And uh, and we're talking with Brian and the district leadership team and then also with Board Chair Thompson. Just felt like this might be the opportune time to really separate out the, the accounting specialist part of the job from the treasurer's part of the job so that we can really delineate that these are the things the board wants the treasurer to do and it, it does indicate that it's an annual appointment by the board and not a, not a hire. Um, Michelle asked me to kind of figure, give uh an indication to the board of what the difference is in cost. Like what is the cost that the board's incurring to hire a treasurer? Um, and so what we did was we looked at the admin, the classified admin salary schedule and the accounting specialist without the treasurer duties would fall in that column B. And when you add the treasurer duties to that, uh, that particular job description, it would move that into column C because of the requirement to supervise the assistant bookkeepers. So column C, that everybody in that column has some supervision responsibilities. And um, this was kind of just a first blush. So if uh, if there are adjustments that the board wants to make to either of the we took the current, the one that you guys just approved to the treasurer um, job description and pulled out the things that statutorily were required of the treasurer and put, made sure those were on uh the treasurer's job description.
I'm curious, just in reviewing the treasurer reports to the CFO and the board of trustees? The treasurer should only be reporting to the board of trustees.
Um, we can change it if that's what you want. Uh, in, when we looked at it, I guess it, if you're, it's hard to separate it out. If you're, if you're adding it to the accounting specialist, there's going to be conversation with the CFO about the budget stuff. So
Right.
So, um, we can, I mean, we can definitely change that if that's how you want that to read so that for those things, it's, it's the report to the board. Um, that's, yeah, I can make any changes that you want at this point.
Well, I guess in the way I process things, the treasurer does report to the board. That doesn't mean that the board is the treasurer's supervisor. So, I mean, having CFO be the supervisor
Right, so that, so
Yep.
is completely understandable, but they report to the board.
So up at the top where it says reports to, that's the direct supervisor part. In the job description, there is language that says prepares the monthly report for the, the board. So I don't know if we're talking two different things or if you're, if, um, I can make it read whatever way you want it to.
Yeah, the way I'm, my guess is that all job descriptions have the reports to and that is the
Direct supervisor.
hierarchy supervisor for that position. With it being an appointed position, of course, they always report to the board because the board appoints them. So they would report to, so any of those appointed positions would report to the board. Um, so I agree that the reports to for that part. Yeah, she can get information. She's gonna get information from anybody, um, when she's bringing up anybody that has anything to do with financial stuff, she's gonna be bringing that to the board. But I, but I agree with you that that should only actually say the treasurer
For the
reports to the board.
Mm-hmm. I did try to find, and I reached out to trustee Christom. I tried to find the statute that you guys um had um referenced when we were talking about the legal requirement for the treasurer to provide a monthly report. And I couldn't, I couldn't find the statute. So the ones that I did find are linked in there so that you know that those are the ones that we addressed. If there are other statutes that we didn't find, I just need to know what those are so that we can have those referenced as well. So I, for example, I put on there that they would prepare the report, the monthly report for the board. Um, because I've heard the board talk about it, I just couldn't find the statutory requirement that supported it.
And I missed that email, so, um.
I completely understand.
And it's probably those ones that are, they're not the ones that are legally, that are referenced at the bottom of this?
No, the ones that are legally, that are at the bottom say that they are, um, can you, can I click on this?
Yes.
Um. So the, the two that I referenced, um, this access custodian of all monies belonging to the district, that's language right out of the statute. And this must be eligible to be placed under a fidelity bond and or a personal bond, that's language right out of the statute.
No, I was actually referring to the one at the bottom that says legal references.
Yeah, the, these are, that, within these legal references, the, I'm telling you what is actually in those parts, yeah.
Those parts, okay. Okay, gotcha.
Yep. This is the one I, I, I know that you guys have talked about a statutory requirement, I just couldn't find the right statute. Brian thought maybe it was under like other local governance type thing and not specific to school board. So, um, cause I was looking specifically at the school board statues.
That has to do with the annual, um, appointment or something like that. It's one of those, I can find it and
And just send it to the
The structure of the board.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, you, um, and then we can add it to the bottom. And I just, I just wanna make sure that the language we're using is, matches the language in the statute.
Right, right.
This is chapter five, title thirty-two or thirty-three. So it just says each January
Right, yeah, there's
Pick a treasurer.
Yep.
Yeah. Um, there's a, yeah, it's in there somewhere. I'd have to go back and look in our notes.
Thirty-three, five oh six.
Which I think we have, yeah, organization and government and board of trustees, that's the appointment of the treasurer. And then five oh nine is the duties of the treasurer.
Rosanna mentioned that it's possibly under thirty-three, seven oh two.
Seven oh one.
Seven oh one.
Or seven oh three, call for warrants for payments each month.
Oh, yeah, you're right. Yep, it's right in that, it's right in that area with the warrants and all that, yep, I believe so.
So our hope in
Okay.
in bringing this now, that's okay.
The treasurer of each school district on the first Monday of each month, of which there is sufficient money in the treasury to pay any outstanding warrants, shall issue a call
Yep.
for the warrants with such monies, uh, which such monies will pay. Elementary school districts, um, posting a list of the warrants called
We'll have to go through and dig, and dig it all out and update the
Yeah. Yep.
Cause and that's to be done by the treasurer.
Yeah, there's a whole list of duties that belong to the treasurer and reporting to the board.
Okay.
Um, but yeah, we can
I just wanna make sure I capture that so that we're, we have all of those statutory requirements in there. The, um, the reason I'm bringing it so early is, um, our current treasurer is going, her, will retire effective December thirty-first. And, um, my hope is that, um, at the October board meeting, we have the audit report and so we kind of are buttoning up things from, from that. Um, it would be nice to be able to, and I did talk to CFO Wallace about this, it would be nice to be able to hire the replacement and have that person be able to train with our current treasurer for a month or two.
Have a little bit of overlap.
Mm-hmm. And so, um, so that's why I'm trying to, so I, I, uh, this doesn't have to be approved tonight if there are changes you want. I think looking at this other statutes is important to make sure we have the language in there correctly. Um, so I can bring it back to the October board meeting, um, with some, some modifications. I just wanted it on your radar so that we can move that forward.
Yeah, so this process on the accounting specialist uh, processing monthly financial reports for purchase orders, budgets, and bank reconciliations, that very well sounds like a treasure duty.
So some of these, I, um, some of them, I, that's why I wanted to bring it because I split and I went through every single one of those and went back and forth. And where we were struggling the most was it's always been the same person.
Right.
And so what part is the treasurer part and what part, and then without the statutory
Right.
the other statutes that I know you guys have been referencing, we were, we were struggling to be able to pull those out.
Right, and I'm, I'm a strong advocate for every position has its own designated responsibilities even though, you know, someone else can take on those duties, but, um, yeah. Okay, so I guess with the board, Brian, have you seen this job description that they compared?
Yeah, we went over it.
You did go over it.
District Leadership Team, and that was the first time that Brian got to see it, so he might have some additional.
Yeah, and I mean, I think, yeah, what Superintendent Arnold did with Dr. Pazza, I thought was really good. Really, they took the, the last one that the board had had and, and just tried to move and disaggregate the duties. And there might be some misogyny if the board thinks that that's appropriate, but, um, but I thought, you know, it looked pretty good, really. And I'm looking, trying to sort of say, well, if this person's just accounting specialist but wasn't appointed by the board, what would the, sort of the variance be? So I thought, I thought they did a good job, yeah.
So Randy, do you think by, um, October's meeting, you would be able to kind of like help look at this and from your financial background? And then Ramona, with your input for, specific for the treasurer duties?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and what may be on the accounting specialist that actually, as a board, we feel should be on the treasurer's responsibilities? That we can
Yeah, we just, uh, do like we do with policy, just everybody access, put in your little notes or whatever and then you can just, it's, it's all administrative, you know, it's not, you know, we can all work on the document together and then just approve it and knock it over.
Okay. Dave?
I'm good.
Can you add your two cents worth of guidance?
Sure.
All right.
All right. I think, uh, just for
Oh, a classified ticket.
Just sorry, for point of clarification, um, if, if, I guess the one thing we were trying to do just so that you kind of can see our brainwaves for this. Um, recognizing that this is an appointed position by the board, which in my mind means we're not actually opening the position of hiring, but we're, we're appointing somebody who's already on staff and they already have a full-time job. So what we were trying to do was really stay true to the statutory requirements so that we weren't creating another full-time position, I guess.
Yeah, actually, the board can hire, who, in the appointing, we, we don't have to appoint from within. We can hire, we can appoint someone from the board.
Right.
Yeah, so we aren't obligated to pull somebody from the district if we felt like there was, you know, whatever reason.
I did, yeah, yeah, we just have never
Yeah.
done that, and so we were trying not to create another full-time job through the job description. If the board wants to go a different direction, but I just want you to know how we were thinking about it and why it looks small compared to the other one.
Right, and whether it's small or large, I just want to make sure that the expectation of the treasurer is delineated so that everybody knows what the treasurer should be doing so that when the treasurer is appointed, the treasurer can do what there's to do. Yeah.
Yep, and this is, I think this is the perfect opportunity to get to what you guys have been trying to get to, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm not trying to load the treasurer down.
I just want the treasurer, I want, I want it to be what it's supposed to be, so.
Okay.
So, now it's all in the same document that, um Oh, so both job descriptions we have to table?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I will move to table the approval of the new job descriptions for the accounting specialist and treasurer until the October meeting. No second? Having a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Now with respect to the cell, classified admin salary matrix, is this something we need to reapprove?
No, you had asked me what the cost differential was and I didn't know how to do that.
Okay, okay. Okay.
Because depending on what cell people were in in column B, the differential was different when you move over to column C a little bit. So what I was just trying to show the board was without the supervisory role, if it's just the accounting specialist, they would be in column B. If you added
The basic column A.
Column B. And if you added the treasurer responsibilities to that person, it would move them into column C because of the level of responsibility.
Okay. However, if a treasurer position was in fact a part-time position that we went outside of the norm
We would have to, based on their job responsibilities, we would have to figure out where that would fall in the matrix because it's not currently on there.
Okay, cause the board's never known what the treasurer's made, so.
Uh, well, uh, technically, according to statute, we can pay the treasurer whatever we want. It's not tied to any matrix, any, any, it's not tied to anything to do with the school district according to statute.
Okay.
So, you know, I mean, obviously, probably makes it a bit cappy when we stay with the view of the matrix here.
Okay.
True, but, yeah.
I just wanted to clarify that for people listening.
And so Cindy's sole title is treasurer? She's not an accounting specialist?
Because that's the job description that we've always used is the treasurer.
Okay.
But now's a great time to modify that practice.
Okay.
And if you don't like the title of the job without the treasurer attached to it, that's open to discussion. Also, the accounting specialist, um, if there's a better title for that. We just tried to think about what that person actually would be doing without the, the treasurer duties, so.
Well, in all fairness, I think the board's focus is the treasurer and the treasurer's responsibility. I think if you I think if you and CFO Wallace want to rename that accounting specialist, that's, that's within your purview. And then we just approve the job descriptions, so, um, yeah, that's, I mean.
And we're starting now.
Go for it.
Okay. Living in a whole new direction.
Okay, definitely. All right, so with that being said, um, looks like we're free to, to.
Do we have any action after the second session?
We took action in the second session.
Oh, so you'll just let me know?
We'll let you know, we'll let you know. All right, so with that, meeting adjourned, seven oh seven.
Yay.
Thank you. So we'll just have to tell all, that he's busy, so I'm meeting adjourned.